And we're rolling.
All right, it's Chris Hood with us tonight?
He's coming on when he talks, we'll see.
I am here. Good evening, everybody. Where are you?
Yeah, it's the B room. It says it right on top of the agenda.
Where am I at? Oh, all right, the time is six thirty-one and with us tonight is City Attorney Chris Hood, Kim Van Bev, anyone else online?
We have Mitch Re- Reu. Hello?
All right.
Whenever he talks.
Okay, very good, thank you. And Patrick Knight, Mike Roth, Annie Silence, Bill Lovess, Ben Peters, Craig Schulte, Michael Gary, and myself. All right, it is now time for the open forum. Is anyone here for an forum this evening? Is that a yes?
Yep.
Do we have? I guess it doesn't make sense using the owl, right? So, does that work good? Okay.
Here's a query for the city.
Can you just make sure you give your name for the?
Dan Riddle, sent down here by the V W. What we're looking at doing, might be ways for the Freedom Row, big projects going on Iowa and now Southern Minnesota. Wants to take a peek at. We're entertaining the idea of doing such project in our county somewhere. So I know where it's really. First step for us is establish interest and then possible location. And that would be up to whoever, whatever land we happen to get a hold of. Nice project. There's Rock Service, like a hundred in Iowa right now. Yes, the eighth one just finished in Minnesota. They all look the same with the bolted. It's a commemorative to fallen soldiers, people that served. We have any number up here in the county that would be perfect for the rock, especially the, well, Colville. It was in the, he was commander of the Minnesota First Civil War, he's here. George Nelson served in the Second World War, forty-fourth boom. Those are the kind of people he put on. That's not, uh, sets up to Boa, the ones operating the company. Present who we think would be worthy of it, and he would decide it and do the painting and stuff, so. The first step for us is just to find a location that would work and then we could proceed from there. It's no cost if it's in the city, no cost to use just a chunk of the land. That's the county that'd be interested in this, put it about here, but we haven't had that meeting yet. But it's just a query right now, see if there's any interest and if there is, we'll just proceed. We're a little bit.
All right. Well, and if there's something more than asked to come on the agenda?
Yeah, if you want a detail, we'd like to.
Yeah, if there's something more or more action that requires city, whatever.
At this point, we just basically decent land. I guess it wouldn't take more than twenty by twenty. Put the stone on and do some milk around it, so. If you want to, and this is a packet I gave you, if you want, you can go to Boa's website, he's the one that touched the painting. All the work he does, and some are amazing. And the most fanciest one we saw was the blank, basically dedicated a court, a city block to everything, anything regarding, in regarding to the best, all branches, all persons served. So. It's a nice project. A lot of people are like, yeah, it's gonna take some time, but. We'll probably get, we have first of profit. We can perceive the cost of all of it.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I mean, this one stills if there's more, just ask to get on the agenda, yeah.
So if the city approves something, then yeah, they're. Well. We're. Yeah, basically, I didn't say my finance. Well. If you have any questions, just shoot, give me an email, call me. The complete process that they go through, it's all set. He's got information, what we do, step by step, so it's already laid out. We just have to start with the dirt. Got it? So, right? Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right, anyone else here for open forum? All right. Then next up, John Hegg Miller with our City Hall and Liquor Store Project Update.
You're fine. Why don't you come here?
So you can. So the owl can find you.
Solitaire.
Uh, good afternoon or evening, everyone. Again, my name is John Hegg Miller. I'm with McGough Construction. I'm the Site Superintendent for the City Hall in Minnesota Liquor Store Project. And I'm here to give my bi-monthly update. Uh, structural steel is complete. The roof is on, not the whole roof, but the steel decking is on. Uh, we started steel studs framing earlier this week, and I think we have the, almost the west side complete. Um, so we're gonna continue onto the site set, and going back up to the northwest corner and coming back down towards, uh, Brockton. Um, we're continuing with underground drainage system for the parking lot. Uh, we're building back the parking lot at the same time. And sheathing of the building will start next week. So, the building instead just sticks. Uh, before the next time we meet, uh, we'll start our exterior waterproofing, uh, some sidewalks, the curb and gutter. And, uh, that's about it. So if anyone has any questions, please ask them now or reach out to me. I'll stop by if you like. You're always welcome.
Would it be okay to ask, like, what the timeline's at? Or is that cruel?
Come on, I would like it last into February of two thousand twenty-six, but. I, I just like.
I know.
Um, right now, we redid our schedule from the original schedule and the new contracts, since we were delayed all the whole time. We're ending up, uh, somewhere around the twentieth of December. But now with the new schedule that came out, it's gonna be around the seventeenth of, uh, January. And like I've been talking with, uh, Mike here, uh, our process is to get the liquor store up and ready to shelving all the material that and, uh, systems that they need. So that can be opened up as soon as possible because you know when you're paying rent on the other place. And if that possibly drives back on, uh, City Hall, I think that would be better. Just so you don't have to pay that rent and you have other places where City Hall is. So that's what our thought was, my thought, and no one has said boo about it, so I guess it's a good one.
And we're still okay with our time capsule type thing which we need to get rolling on, but.
I can't remember the date that I gave you, but it's gonna be somewhere around first to the second week of, uh, November, that would have something down.
All right.
Um, and I'll, I'll talk to Mike on what, how big of a box we're gonna do. And, uh, I'm not gonna tell you where it's gonna be, but.
That includes the clown?
Well, we have the clown.
Oh, we do. So.
Okay.
But yeah, um, I'll make something up and get something ready to go for you, and I won't give you the size that, that's on it.
We'll just put flash drags in there.
I don't have any idea what to do.
I want a floppy. Yeah, I might as well throw in an A-track. What did you do? We put vinyl, it'll probably still be used.
All right, so, again, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and again, uh, feel free to stop down, get ahold of me, what's for. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, did they talk to you about the key number?
To the, for the knockbox?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, after I talked to you, I tried to fold it to one company and the guy said those things are like on the record or something like that, I think.
Okay.
And, uh, I had a chance to like track it down or try to track down another vendor because I kinda got feeling that. If we gotta go with a different style box or what, I definitely got a straight answer kind of that, yeah.
All right, but if you've got a line on something, no, we don't, okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, up next is the consent agenda and, um, we'll also, are we just going to move up Benny as part of the budget conversation? Just, okay. So we'll move that.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, and then do we want to potentially switch the tax abatement above the resolution or?
We have guests for that too, so.
Oh, okay.
It shouldn't take us long.
Okay. Um, so then, uh, a motion to approve the consent agenda, which will also approve this agenda and be moving, um, placing in the fire budgets department conversation to be right after the consent agenda.
Take that motion, second.
All right, any further changes, questions around any of that, bills? All right, um, all in favor of the changed consent agenda? Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, so let us move on to. The fire department budget.
Um, I guess as you can see, there's really, uh, not a terrible amount of changes.
I think we changed one number.
For what? Yeah, I think that'd be probably the simplest department as far as budgeting goes. Um, and as far as what we need to be doing, if we've, we bought our, we got our ladder truck that's in service. If you drove by today, it's sitting in the, uh, fire hall with flag on it today. And, uh, it has yet to be used as on an actual scene or anything yet, but that's usually a good thing. Um, other than that, we don't really have any large, um, financial needs. At this time, we did kind of put together a upbuilding maintenance, um, kind of a list just for like, you know, doors and stuff like that are starting to get a little rotten and just simple stuff like that that will kind of pursue contractors. I have to assume that I'll work with Lenny on that to try to see, uh, maybe tackle some of that next spring and over this summer. Um, the only thing that we'd like to do is get the two older vehicles, uh, sold and maybe get, uh, a newer, more efficient kind of a support kind of truck. Some kind of four-door or something just to be able to haul people in or smaller equipment and that kind of stuff. But, uh, yeah, I mean, that, that's really that's the bulk of it.
So the operating supplies line. Well, I guess it's twenty twenty-two is particularly low. And twenty twenty-four budgeted went up. Yeah, and then actuals were over, so what are operating supplies? Like your literal, even in truck?
Yeah, they're just literally, um, I think we probably, we broke a, had a valve break and just some fittings and nozzles and things like that, that we don't necessarily. We don't know if that we're gonna break something, that's eight hundred dollars or something like that, but, uh, that's where those costs come in, that's just, you know, fittings, gloves, just any kind of thing that we use kind of on the scene or.
Sure. Just wanna make sure. I guess because that's why like twenty twenty-three was like really low because just whatever, you didn't have a lot.
Didn't need to buy much.
Right.
So we're just gonna go on the safe side then, that's right, all right. And then the service agreement last year for this year? For ten grand?
Kim, do you know what that was? Those. I take the.
Violence Prevention Center transfer.
Okay, thank you. Does that really serve what came? And then, I think this is what we have talking about for utility service, I mean, water.
Yeah, those are always, the utilities are always tough to gauge. I mean, I realize we had a, we had a fairly mild winter, but we did have um, some more training going on at the fire hall over the, over the last year. That, uh, I do remember that we had, instead of sending folks to go to a hydrant to disso and fill, that would disrupt the, you know, the processes or whatever, we just ran a hose right off the, uh, we have a overhead system, a filling system that can run a two and a half inch hose. Um, so we just hooked that up to a truck so that it would just kind of continuously fill in while we're operating, so.
We're gonna look at that. Billing ourselves for water that we put in a fire truck.
Yeah, it's not going in the sewer, which is obviously the, the thing in expensive, getting rid of water.
So the capital out, like when you talk about buildings, um, like those doors or whatever, that's part of that four grand or whatever. But then Lenny's group actually will be doing that work. It's not an expectation, obviously, by your department, right?
Well, yeah, and, um, what we would have to do, we would have to replacing doors and kind of doing that kind of stuff, we think that's a little bit out of the Lenny scope that we do in that contract.
But I mean, it's not literally else of yours.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's not part of our, our description, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
More questions for Ben?
Anything?
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Ben.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So next up is the Planning Commission, uh, Report for Resolution, twenty twenty-four thirty-nine. Fight for Something LLC.
Yes, so this is free shape earth, it's Jack Stone's place, old place. Um, on the second and third floor, there's space there that they, that already always been there. Um, that could be used for, um, short-term or long-term rental, and Mitch wants to actually do that. Um, where he is, that's allowed use. Um, of course, yes, to come here and ask, that's got that, but he is doing that. And, uh, what we did at our last, uh, council meeting, you'll recall, is we, uh, made a con- contract with him for the property adjacent on the, on the south side that was filled in there. Um, that also Jack had the same deal with us, as does East Bay have. Um, so with that, uh, he actually does have the parking that he needs in order to, I mean, it's tight. But he can, it's, it's possible to, to put in enough, or put in enough cars in there. Um, a stipulation that we put in this is that, you know, we'll give the conditional use, um, so long as that, um, property remains or that, um, agreement remains in force with us, so that he has a space for people to, to park who might be occupying those. That's kind of the sum of it.
Just for clarity of anybody who might be watching, the special permission is required for the residential use, the long-term residential use above the first four kinds of, the short-term vacation that state use is actually just allowed.
Okay, may I like to make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-nine?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, second, all right, any further questions or comments at all? All right, um, all in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-nine?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and with that, it passes.
Just wanted to chime in and say thanks, guys. This is Mitch, tuning in online, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mitch, you're welcome.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to the Conning Mill State Fund, the Heights, the Tax Abatement Conversation.
You're not gonna sit. We don't want to crowd you. It's you. One thing, so that I noticed in the packet, there's an outdated TIF or DAAP run that you received. I'm not sure it's attached to the memo, it might have been, I don't know if consented, but there's a. It's in queries. Okay.
I think you did.
Not the memo, it's fine, it's the attached.
The attached.
Analysis, yeah. It's not very different, but I'm just sending an updated one to Patrick. Um, we've had three different versions, so I'm not surprised that it's it's easy if you're looking at enough, at least to probably mix them up. But I'll send that to you just in a moment so you can look in the same numbers. Um, uh, well, I guess I'll start off just saying, uh, hello again. Uh, you are all familiar with this project. This has been in a conversation for a year. Uh, and back in February, council, I think it was fourteenth council, Valentine's Day, that's right, my wife reminded me. Uh, because I was a council, uh, and, uh, we, uh, talked about this, uh, and the council sort of gave what we would call maybe a motion of support to support the project. Uh, and that was in advance of, uh, the I triple R agreement or, uh, excuse me, a grant award that we received. So the abatement was a request to use as local match so we could apply for that grant from I triple R. The county did the same thing. And so since then, uh, of course, we received the I triple R grant award. It was a little less than we applied for, but it's about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Bless you, and the HRA, uh, the HRA is, uh, bringing actually at the next meeting on Wednesday, we have our development agreement going forward, uh, for the development team. Um, this is sort of the last public domino, so to speak, is the tax abatement piece. And so I've been working with Mike and James Yorky, uh, elders and HRA attorney and all the other entities, um, to try to button this up and, uh, get the information squared. It's quite a process to figure out, um, I'll speak for the HRA here. My job is to provide just enough to make the project work and not more than the project needs. And so that will involve me telling Gary no sometimes or pushing back and working with elders to figure out what that, that line is. So we've worked really hard in the last few months, particularly on this, to figure out a, what we think is a really reasonable request situation. And so we thought at Mike's sort of suggestion, and we're doing the same thing next week with the county board, because tax abatement is new for most people. And it's been a, a little bit since we talked about it last time. There's new counselors that we talked about last time. Uh, and so we wanted to make sure we had some time to just answer some questions, tell you what, where we landed, what the request is going to be on the twenty-fifth. Um, and, yeah, answer any questions you might have. So, Mike, I don't know if there's anywhere you want to start particular or what you were thinking.
Um, at the end first of tonight, which is the one thing we're gonna ask you to do, is set a public hearing for your next meeting, which is a requirement to actually consider tax abatement.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we'll ask you today to do. Uh, and then otherwise, there's a difference now from February, that there's a wealth of information about this project that is in the packet for you to look at. And I think that's really what we want to accomplish tonight is educate you about all the things we know now about the project and put the context around the ask before you have to consider it.
Did you just, you know, sure in, for example, um, most of our cost estimates were really estimates. Since then, we, we've upped the budget of this project by over a half a million dollars as we've honed in on, on those things. We're still not final, but if it goes over that, we've got some solutions still to be able to, to pull it off, but uh, without that clarity, if, um, where we were with elders on this process, uh, elders trying to make a recommendation of what would be helpful for the project, uh, say their hands were tied also because there's a lot of conjecture about the various elements. And we had been able, over seven months now, eight months, we've been able to figure out a lot of those pieces. Elers took it all into their little grinder and, and, uh, outcomes a new, a recommendation which the developer supports. Um, uh, th- this meets our needs for the, as, as Jason says, the last hole we have to fill on the project, um, as far as the public side goes. And the, the rest is just slogging it out. We'll, we'll be just slogging it out with our subcontractors and vendors to get the thing built. But all the other pieces are, are largely in place.
Yeah, Gary, maybe, uh, thank you. Maybe it will be helpful for counselors to just work through is you can see on the memo you received, which is a bunch of numbers, uh, and of sorts of news and reports.
The elders' memo.
Yes, I'm sorry, there are two memos, correct, the elders' memo, uh, there's numbers in, in Gary's memo as well. Uh, but, um, the elders' memo, uh, of course, this is what the HRA, you know, we're our contract is with elders and the city has one, the county has, everybody has one, apparently Cook County though. Um, which is actually really useful because we can kind of speak the same language and make sure we're on the same page. Um, the project costs right now, projections based on the most recent that you can have without getting final numbers is eight point six million, a little over. Um, that, uh, I just think it's helpful, it's Gary and I were talking about this earlier this week. The, the value that county assessor, we just got that, so for, when you do tax abatement or TIF, you want the county assessor to say, we think it's gonna be worth X when it's done. Like, that's the value. Um, they are valuing it at six point one million, based on the rents and the revenue. So my point is, there's an obvious gap between the value and what it's costing to build, and that's why the HRA, I triple R, that's why abatement's being asked for. Because it's not, according to the, you know, the county and according to elders, it's not worth what it costs to build unless there's that coming in with assistance. So one thing that's changed a lot, that's been a kind of a head-jerker for me in the last three years, we used to do projects with twenty percent down for equity. Like twenty twenty-five, depending on what it was. This is like forty percent down equity. Um, so the bank is lending out fifty-five to sixty percent of the project cost, well, maybe half in this case.
Between forty, there are two different banks, one's forty-seven percent, one's fifty-one percent.
What, like, what they're willing to lend.
What they're willing to lend.
So my point is, this is a prod, this is a problem across the development space right now, period, and this is a result of um, rates and costs going up, et cetera, and not just rates, by the way, banks are just a little less liquid. Uh, and they're a little tighter on their lending, so all of that's to say, we're just showing like, where in the past, we had to figure out how to get twenty percent in equity for a project because a bank would absorb more risk. They're not doing that. Um, and it's not just this project, it's every project we're working on, uh, and my colleagues across the state. So the gap just got harder, so that's why we've got, you know, over two million, that two point four million that equity team has brought together, and then the resources that the HRA has helped order. And again, the tax abatement we talked about in, uh, February, uh, the, the city's version, like, the amount that was listed that we talked about was up to fifteen years with a cap of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, that was the limit. As you see in the elders', uh, memo here, we're fortunately, through all the fine tuning, we're bringing that down. So it's, uh, on the last page of the, this last page, and yeah. Um, it says future value gross payments, two ninety-three nine seven seven is the, it's a good mark. So my point is, we did that intentionally because we just didn't have enough fine details at the time, and we always would rather move down. So in both the city and county cases, we're proposing and requesting less than the amount, the up to amount that was approved and awarded, because again, our job, others' job, is to try to provide what's needed to make it work, not more than what's needed to make it. Um, there's, people often get, or have questions about that, there's two columns on that page, the present value, future value. We can talk about that, that's financing situation, but I don't want to go teething in the weeds if you don't, it's not relevant or important, but is there anything about this particular situation you have questions about? I'd be happy to tackle it.
Um, really not questions, but did you before have, it looked like now you've built in that we can take some of the tax immediately. You're not taking a hundred percent, which I don't recall that being part of the earlier conversation.
So this is where I make developers not happy, um, and we negotiate things like this, we're out the gate instead of a hundred percent of that increase. So this is where I make developers not happy, and we negotiate things like, this, we're out the gate instead of a hundred percent of that increase, they're receiving eighty. So immediately, the city would be getting tax revenue from the project, that twenty percent of that revenue. The other thing that we negotiated that they agreed to, and frankly, you can ask elders, that developers don't like lookback clauses, period. For obvious reasons, but we worked out one that they are agreeing to insert in the agreement, which what it means is, after stabilization of the project, which is usually between year two and three, stabilization is a fancy term for saying, it's been leased up for about ninety percent for a year. Like, it's stabilized. We're not still trying to get the initial rent up. After that's occurred, they do what's called a lookback, where they say, okay, you leased up, what are the rents you're actually getting instead of what you projected, because those aren't always the same thing? And if you're getting better than you expected, starting in year nine of this abatement, we're reducing your amount to what you actually would need to make it work. So there's a sort of loop back check in. Now.
And that, in fact, that's interest rates as well, isn't it?
Correct, yep. So, in other words, if anything, whatever the metric is, you know, they have to show the full perform on rentals. And when we, like elders, we put consultant, if it's elders, whoever the city wants to engage or the county wants to engage, but let's just pretend it's still elders. They will go and do a thorough reanalysis and say, okay, this is what you actually, the income you actually received. Do you need the abatement as we've described originally, or do we need to reduce that to make it more reasonable? So there's a sort of a lookback safety clause on top of the twenty percent the city and county will continue to get of the increase. So obviously, right now, I think it's generally something like three thousand dollars a year in taxes, give or take. Yeah, maybe less. This, well, I think, I think in my mind, it's like thirteen thousand additionally, or something.
Yeah, my memo outlines that the difference is about an increase of about thirteen thousand for city and county. And you are correct, man, there that it was, it was ninety percent before, now it's eighty percent.
And if the lookback clause, to be clear, I will be blown away if if they're hitting above the revenue that they're supposed to hit based on the projections based on rents. Right now, it's, I'd just say that there's some, there's definite wiggle room between where they're projecting to get in that cap. And this is all recommendation by like elders' industry standard of what's reasonable in these types of projects.
More likely that you'd get it in lower interest rate?
If particularly possible, yeah. In that case, yeah. So there, again, there are different mechanisms if they do it. The other thing is, if the taxes, so there are basically two primary things that will increase the taxes. One is local tax rate of the city or county, and then the other one's valuation. So, the valuation is based on the income. So in other words, it's all tied together. If it's worth eight million in three years, it's because the county assessor saw that the income is way more than they expected. And so that will impact the taxes, which means the abatement will last less time, because they'll pay that minimum number of two ninety-three off faster. If that makes sense. I know it's complicated, but.
Fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions?
Mike, Mike.
See that? You're formulating one?
Yeah. Well, I was just trying to think, so you said, so there's the stabilization, but then you mentioned year nine.
Yeah, so the agreement that we reached is, and again, obviously, elders' supports is from years, well, basically two. Simplicity say, years one through eight, abatement will be eighty percent will be provided. The lookback period says, if it looks like based on projections after that, and I believe that the developer's not planning on taking a developer fee until
Year nine.
Year nine after that. And so they're not, so the team's not actually making any development fee or, you know, money off of doing this project, which is, I can tell you, very unusual. It's very, it's common now to see what's called a deferred fee, where they'll take half of it upfront, and then they'll wait for a while to pay out the rest. They're paying out, I think, fifty thousand dollars to one of the partners, and the rest is waiting for eight years. So, I just, and this is not lip service, this is truly more about impacting from local investors than it is about the dollar amount. Because the people that I've, just people that are willing to do that. People are willing to spend two and a half years doing a project and not making any money for eight years. It's been my experience anyway.
It kind of makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, and I understand why, like, I don't blame you. So yes, there will be eight years of abatement at eighty percent, but anything after that is subject to that lookback clause.
Lookback doesn't kick in.
Correct. That was the minimum amount.
But the projection where you made in year?
Yeah, so what you want to do is you want to see, because the reality is, like, you'll know by year stabilization, and the terms define what that is. By that point, you'll know, like, oh, is it gonna, is it performing better or worse, or about what was expected? Okay. So you do that sort of lookback period to capture it, and then you say, okay, starting in year nine, nine to fifteen, maybe you need half of what you were gonna get. Or maybe you need the full amount, just depends on what the revenue says.
And it's actually good for us to kind of know early if we're going, you know, what level of abatement we'll get in about lying years. So, because uncertainty, there are enough other things that are happening that are uncertain. So having, having that, either having it or not having it, the knowledge is really helpful to us.
Yeah.
So that was one of the conditions that elders put in there that we found very, very helpful.
Yep.
So the really next step is, is this gonna be a special meeting, or is this just part of our?
At your regular meeting, you'll hold a public hearing.
So the county has already held their public hearing to hell in February. And then they'll meet the twenty-fourth in advance of your twenty-fifth meeting. So the goal here is, of course, in, you know, to get this to on agenda, the county the twenty-fourth, and then the twenty-fifth, and then we know, okay, public approvals are done, now they just have to build the thing. Which fortunately I have to deal with. But they're also, yeah, they're also timelines with the IRRR grants and other money that we're providing. The HRA's grant, for example, the ARPA money that we received from the county, that has to be committed to the project by the end of the year. That's the deadline, like, that's the federal deadline. So, we are trying to be cognizant of that, of course, too, which is part of the reason we're doing this now, and make sure we have.
Other questions?
Can I make a comment?
Thoughts?
Absolutely.
Just want, just want to discuss legal logistics a little bit. So is the intent then, after the holding the public hearing on the twenty-fifth, that you would adopt an abatement resolution at that same meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So in order to do that, we actually have to have an abatement resolution that has all of the terms and conditions that have been agreed upon. And we also need an abatement agreement.
Yep.
And so I have drafted an abatement agreement, which I've given to Mike.
Yes.
Took what Jason had provided at some point earlier on, and made changes to it, which I think need to be included in the document. Ultimately, I made it as a joint agreement with the county and the city signing the same thing, because you're basically doing the same thing. Is that correct?
But we probably won't use the joint version this time. But I think in long term, our intent is to move that direction. We just haven't had enough time to talk to each other about it.
So there are very specific terms and conditions or changes that I made to that agreement that Jason provided that should be included in the agreement that the city of Grand Marais adopts.
Yes. So just what we're gonna do is take your workup, and then include the terms and conditions that the HRA has negotiated with the developer, and provide, and just present that to the council as these are the terms and conditions that we're recommending. And that, that's what the agreement's gonna look like.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Chris, great point, and the county's doing the mirror of that, for the agreement that I sent, we're doing the same language, sent to both parties.
Because there's one, there's one provision in particular that is important, that I made as a change. And it relates to the market value of the property and any challenge to that market value of the property, that that cannot happen during the abatement period. So we want to make sure that that's part of any agreement that we have.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all you got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
So, question though, you had mentioned that we're gonna bring these agreements together at some point? That's a common scenario.
When developers request assistance, and it's the same request to the city and the county, what we thought anyway was, we ought to be able to do that together. Maybe one agreement that we've all looked at and agreed to. There's, we're not ready to do that now. So to kick on their schedule, we're gonna set that aside for this this time. That, I think that's also what we anticipated when you adopted your abatement policy, which was one of the conditions that you're requiring for folks who want to ask for abatement is that they work with the HRA if they're asking for abatement for a housing project, and that they work with the county if they're asking for assistance at all. So, in this case, they're doing that.
I guess what I was driving towards is, is there going to be further agreements?
No. No, so these are actually all operate independently. Our tax bill will be evaded based on our agreement. The counties will be debated based on their agreement. The HRA has their own agreement with their own terms for their assistance.
We did provide language, and I think the county intends, and I'm not sure of the city, but language to tie basically both of the abatement agreements, point to the HRA's development agreement, saying, hey, we're all working together here for this project. And because the HRA has additional terms, like no short-term rents, and, you know, rent caps, like, we have additional things we're building in.
Yeah.
And so we thought it would be useful to, all these institutions are like, hey, we're all doing this together, separate but together. So we're kind of speaking the same language. And that's just, that was functionally like Mike said, that was because the, all these entities just haven't had the bandwidth to figure out how to do one uniform agreement. And so we just said, for this time, we'll make it work for the three different agreements. The HRA would have to have a separate one anyway. Our development agreement's separate from the abatement piece. We don't do abatement. But.
With all of that, any more questions or comments?
You need a motion to settle public hearing for next meeting at six thirty here, on the twenty-fifth.
Does that have to be in this room?
We're gonna be in that.
Oh, good. Then I'll make that motion.
We would like to second the motion for a hearing for tax abatement on the Heights project, close to mine, for September twenty-fifth, city council meeting.
I'll second it.
Right. Any more further comments, questions? Right, all in favor of the hearing for the Heights tax abatement?
Aye.
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 Right, and with that, it carries.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. So if you think of any questions in the interim season, feel free to reach out.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'll just move on to a little more fun things. This is our Fourth Avenue paving project that we had some conversation that Lenny provided to us, and does anyone? I think what we need with this is a motion to approve the three hundred foot repair with work done, well, being done by KTM, and it was, of course, their bid that would would be working out. Anyone like to make a motion for that?
I would make a motion to approve the repaving at three hundred foot option. Cost of forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars.
Need a second for that?
No.
All right, any further questions or comments from that? All right, all in favor?
I think.
Aye. All right, and with that, that cancels, carries. So, now we can move on to the budget.
Budget. You've now had a chance to sit down with each of your department heads with departments that have property tax-supported budgets, and look at their line items. We have what I still consider a very early draft budget here that you're looking at, although now it's our second draft. The original packet last week included a levy of one point two, just over one point two million. And currently in the packet, based on your conversations, we're proposing a preliminary levy of one million, one fifty-two, six thirty-six, forty-five. That's about seventy-some thousand more than last year's one million, seventy-nine thousand. You all know this, but I'll just mention it again, the preliminary levy is an early step in our budgeting process. It's a number that we cannot exceed. We can, however, lower. And you know, we do have intention to look at some of these issues that we discussed in the work session, and with the hopes that that number can change. We also talked about some things that you're trying to accomplish, and how you're gonna use this money. So, I'm pleased to recommend this six point seven five percent preliminary levy. And we'll keep talking about this for December.
Yeah, and can I, can you remind me, so we're setting forth a preliminary budget, why do we have to do that?
Statutory requirement. Yeah. To be clear. The whole thing is kind of messed up statutorily. I, we've been talking about budget internally for a while now. The end of the statutory requirement is that we hold a hearing that they used to call Truth in Taxation, I don't know if they still call it that, in December. And so we'll be scheduling that hearing for your first meeting in December, where we invite the public to come in, and I don't know what, because we're done in December.
So we'll have our complete budget by that, when, yeah, when we.
Yes, that, we don't pass the final levy that same meeting, again, statutorily, we're not allowed to. But we're really done thinking about it by then.
Okay.
So, it's misleading, I believe, to invite the public into a meeting in December and ask them to give you input on the budget. It's really a continuous process, and people are continually giving you input. Sure. So, everyone's always invited to talk to us about what they think we should be spending money on.
The Truth in Taxation meeting, is that set by statute? The date of that, or it could be done earlier?
Well, it is, just the process timeline is that it's done then. The day, there's a range of dates that we have to have it within, and it doesn't make any sense to do that. Frankly, the idea of a public hearing to talk about, imagine, you know, the budget at a line item level, isn't really very useful anyway. It's a high-level policy conversation with the public, or it's a really individual conversation about one thing with a member of the public, so. We'll do it, because, you know, it's never a bad idea, but it's just not, I don't think it's very useful to the public to invite them in December, come talk about our budget.
I mean, it's maybe useful for the following, really. Yeah, to know where people are at, and if it's the same cast of characters, then, no.
I would like to see our local regulars in December. It's a good time.
Yeah.
The, all this information is available on our website. All our packets are public, all our meetings are open, they're recorded, they're archived, they're watchable, so the public does have access to this information.
Yeah.
I have just one quick question. Do you have the resolution up on your screen right now?
Oh, it's not attached to here, is it? No, yes, I do.
Okay, so look at revenue.
Okay.
And then looking at our summary, where am I? See, see that? Is that just a typo? The six oh two versus the seventy two?
Yeah, that's a typo.
Typhoon, which one is the typhoon?
Six oh two is wrong, six fifty-two is right. So the one million, one fifty-two is the right number, and that's the sum of six fifty-two, and then the debt levy of five hundred.
So it could be seven oh two on that one, right? Which is what you have in your resolution?
The resolution says six fifty-two. The original one said seven oh two, and we have modified it. Yeah, the six oh two is, is, if you look at the other spreadsheets, it's included in the packet, the one that has a little more detail at the department level, that number, six fifty-two, is the sum of the right-hand column less the debt levy of five hundred thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, my reaction. So if I just look down here,
This, that's.
All those match except for this one.
Yeah, that's six fifty-two. Yeah, that's six fifty-two. What's that making sense?
That's six fifty-two.
Six fifty-two doesn't make
Six, six oh two or seven oh two? That's all I'm asking.
It's neither.
Then why do I have six oh two and seven oh two in revenue, but they're different, but they're
Seven oh two was the number that was in the original packet. Six oh two is the number that's on that spreadsheet, but not the other spreadsheet. And it's a typo. Six fifty-two is the right number. It was uh, the additional
Oh, okay. So this gets, never mind. I just self-created that because I'm looking at my old packet. Thank you. That's why I couldn't marry these up at all. Not because I saw yours and that I was like, where is he getting six fifty-two? All I want to know is, is that we have a hundred percent of typo, but now it's only
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash, excuse me, yeah, dash forty preliminary of two thousand twenty-five levy.
I'll second that.
Alright, any further comments or questions? Alright, with that, all in favor of the preliminary budget for twenty twenty-five? And with that, we have a preliminary budget and the end of our agenda items. We can move on to council and staff reports. Bill, would you like to go first?
I do not have anything.
Anything from the um, and uh, Arrow, Arrowhead Animal Rescue?
I think we'll have that on your next agenda.
So they're okay in the meantime? Oh, wait, you can, you can, alright.
Nope, I don't have anything with uh, misplanning and zoning. Um, North House is having an open house tomorrow night. Come and take a look at the new building. It's pretty cool. Um, it's tomorrow or next Thursday?
It's next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Yeah, that was a couple.
Yeah. Are you still good for the nineteenth?
I'm, I'm gonna make sure I'm good. Okay. Uh, and yeah, so that's it. H R was canceled and moved to tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I had a talks report, but we kind of uncovered revenues and what's going on through September. Um, June was the one that revenues, but uh, September is uh, so I guess some ground there. Um, let's see, what else? Just completed radio waves like last weekend. September eighteenth, it's a park employee appreciation party. All for it. Uh, I think revenues were up in August. But we're approximately um, down six thousand for the year versus last year, but yeah, a good September going in right now. So I think it might be picking some ground there.
That was weather, was it good, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, August made up ground, but June was wet and like it affected the rec park. It also affected golfing. Actually, I think part of the course, you couldn't use it as much. So weather kind of affects that. Um, let's see what else. I think we talked about start to weatherize the rec park on October twentieth. I'm wondering if they do it. No, there's a, a city gathering, a host of city tree inventory open house. I think the county community center log cabin on Thursday, September twelve, or six. That's tomorrow. The event will share information about the relief grant project and conduct a citywide tree inventory and development urban forestry management plan. If you want to have more information on what that's all about. That's when that is. Um, I think that's everything on the rec park. We had a meeting, we had a P U C meeting, um, where basically we went over some uh, well, we have a new hire and I think we talked about that.
Scott Warner will love to come visit you as well at a council meeting, but he's traveling back and forth still for a couple more months, so probably November.
And where's he getting some?
He pranked. He's working here three days a week till November.
No, seriously. The other thing that was on the agenda for P U C was just a service line rules. Just to make uh, people aware of um, rules that pertain to hooks. Uh, public utilities, um, when lines are on your, in your own property, on your own property. We do have those rules posted online. I think we just got issues. And then Neil is returning at the end of the year? Yeah, okay, he's training Scott. So what we covered? We even talked about rates or anything like that.
I had planning and building. We've done it.
Anything with the Y? Are they, are they having meetings?
Well, they switched to quarterly and they missed one because they, and somebody knew. Started up and they started drilling.
Um, let's see, crack at the tree board, that's important. We had uh, Ben and Mike and I were at the city county law enforcement and um, county attorney, which does a criminal prosecutions. We had that meeting last Friday. Got all the data and the info about stats of what services are, well, called. Levels and then sort of a very high-level estimate from Molly, I would say about services provided from now. Just to set the groundwork so we can get that agreement updated and um,
Did she, did they give you any numbers or anything or?
One interesting comment that Pat said is he would like to see a local or, or city level police. Department, for lack of a way to say it again, which I found rather interesting.
He used to be one. He liked the idea of the blue uniforms. I thought maybe they could wear blue uniforms on Tuesdays. He says they're actually not allowed to wear blue.
Oh, is it brown or white?
We'd take white, yeah.
Okay, is that a county thing or?
It's a state rule about shares.
So that was interesting. I'm trying to think if there is any real, excuse me, standouts. Of course, they have the seasonality of every, you know, of everybody. Molly made the point that all the action happens during the busy summer season and then it isn't until later winter that her office might kick in to prosecute some of the busyness.
I would add one thing about, you know, how calls are coded and dispatched is, is very, very complicated. And you, you can't just take, you know, the precinct or whatever and, and look at the calls and say, well, this is all city responsible. Right? I mean, that was the initial home early on was that we're just, we don't look at dispatch. And it's being related to the city. And then we got the spreadsheet, which is like how many entries over
Yeah, I remember that. And then deciding what was the area as well.
But there's a level of subjectivity to how things are coded. You know, based on who's, who's writing it down, which deputies responding and how they, you know. It's not, it was clear as mud.
So I mean, there's, as he said, there's uh, potential for some training opportunities to, to tighten that up a bit. But the software is used by multiple counties as well. So it's accommodating other groups and larger groups. So that adds also to, I believe, why there's so many entry options.
And they're trying to meet federal reporting requirements, like F B I reporting requirements. So they're not going to be able to customize it to us. To me, the, the lack of clarity was helpful to understand this is not transactional. We're not paying for responses to calls. That what we're paying for is the availability of service and what the calls numbers help us understand is just what's going on. One of the things that council, I said multiple times talking about this is that they want more accountability. And what they meant by that, I believe, was just this, let's look at the numbers. Let's look at what sort of calls are happening. Keep us informed. So it's not easy to do with that system, but we at least have an idea of how to do it.
Yeah, I think accountability is also just like, what are issues? Are there issues we could be proactive about? Are there things happening or not happening? Like we think it's a big deal, but it really isn't a big deal. Or if it was, I'd love to still know if the downtown business community is comfortable with how everything's going for them. Do they feel like their businesses are safe or their people out on the street, other customers? I mean, I don't know. Um, so there is that. Oh, that's tomorrow too. The presentation from that survey, we, I think we talked about it last meeting. And tomorrow at noon, it's an online that, that gives a hint. Pardon me?
What was it?
It was, it was administered by Northspan, but it had a long name, but it's more about people's perceptions about safety and community. So they're presenting that tomorrow at noon, which, you know, could be helpful to, if we just want to read about how, how do the, how do the residents of this community feel about things?
Yeah, rural M N, Community Safety Project.
Yeah, there's that. And we have the data. Did we send it up to everybody? Yeah, so I mean, I read through it. You got the gist of it, but um, anyways. So do we have a timeline to meet again?
We did schedule one. I was thinking it would be a few weeks at least. And I think it's kind of balls in the airport because one of the issues we said we wanted to look at next time was help us understand what the price point is. So what does it cost to have one deputy of coverage or two deputies of coverage? What do those look like? And I think that'll be relatively easy for them because I know Pat has done that in the past. But it's was a year or two ago and so they just need updates.
Well, yeah, because he was able to say like, well, yeah, we're not really gonna be able to do everything because there's only so many of us, but we'll still cover you.
There was still an underlying theme, like we don't have the bodies. Think we have somebody in the, in the, you know, picking him out for that job, but we're not ready for that until twenty-six or something like that. I can't remember what he
Helping us figure out what our options are for pricing so we can have a conversation about resources versus service level is next. But we still have some terms to, to figure out when it comes to, okay, if you're short-staffed, you can't just come say we're not going to patrol your area and, and that contract we're paying for, there needs to be something a little bit different.
Which was, that was, and I guess that was the sort of funny conversation we had, which was, well, we're going to be around, we're just not going to be around as much.
And we haven't stopped paying on that. So
And we wouldn't, but
I don't know if they, I mean, they even mentioned in the meeting, somebody said they're glad they canceled that contract. And I thought, well, we're still paying.
Where's that money going?
It's a friendly conversation.
Those are my um, only meetings. And then I just had questions and whole things. Did you have stuff you wanted to?
Many updates I had planned on giving though.
Um, I noticed there was comment in the report that the staff's working on the signs for the liquor store. Can we see some of that or see where that's at?
When we have some designs, yeah. The, we met on site to talk to the local sign maker about some options. Mainly to determine how heavy they would be and how we would attach them to the building while the structure is still accessible. So that much we've sorted out.
Alright, the summit, like who's, who are we like utilizing for actual design work?
Molly.
Where else can, are we putting signs on the roof and on the side?
There's four spots on the liquor store building, so it's safer signs. So all four corners, all four faces of the two liquor store north wall. So the northwest, northeast corners. And all four of those spots have similarly four foot by ten foot of space, some, maybe more on the northwest if we wanted to. And then some just electricity available for whatever type of lighting we want to do. So our, our conversation now is not, this is the sign we want to put up, but it was a little bit, what's the craziest idea in terms of heaviness that someone might realistically come up with in the next sixty years? Because now's the time to bolster the building for that, but actually it's not, I don't believe we're going to ever do that. Signs that people are making now, just the regular wall signs, even some with relief. They're not that heavy.
I don't, I know we brought it up, but I don't think we actually know it, but the tennis pickleball association wanted money aggressively for nets and benches. We went in the circular because it's really belongs to the county and then on top of it all, it goes, apparently goes through their um, the community centers budget and they're out of course for the year, which isn't a huge deal because it's almost the end of tennis season. But I'm just wondering, uh, I'd like to have an agenda items so we could get a process on this as opposed to just them paying us back and forth, whoever to go, you know. We, it doesn't happen every year, but every once in a while they have something going on and then they come and ask us out for money and be kind of nice. So do we ever contribute to this?
Didn't we ever, did we get a request?
Well, yeah, we did, but he said, I'm not coming to your meeting unless you're willing to tell me if you're going to give us money. So we've been sitting here.
I would say you get nothing.
So I first went, I, I looped him back to Davey Mills with the, the county because it really is the county's tennis courts, right? But in the past, we certainly contributed. We've also asked them to go find grant money first. This isn't a large request, but I'd just like to make sure we kind of have a process since it really is the county's. Do we ever like to give money to the skateboard park or the skating rink or any of those other little side items?
I mean, it's very uncommon that they need money. The only time we've given money to tennis is when they've resurfaced courts and it's a two hundred thousand dollar The only time we've given money to tennis is when they've re-surplus courts and it's a two hundred thousand dollar project. For money, that's probably happened three times now. Okay, since twenty three years I've been here, so it's not that often that they ask. This request looked more like just equipment, so not the sort of thing that is. The same that we've supported in the past.
It's a, yeah, it's not the dollar amount, it's just can you have a process? This is all I would like to figure out.
Well, if we were looking for a process, I'd say then don't have a process to take these types of requests because. Either will be no end to them, and so we've gone down this path before too, like, do we need a process to? Have everybody come and ask us for money and it's not really how we want to, I don't think how you want to do things.
I meant it more because it's a county facility.
Yeah.
So that the process would be go ask the county and then if there's anything within the county and us, we want to do.
So the county has been asked and they said they don't have money right now. And so what you're looking for is there a follow up conversation between the city and the county or?
The county ask us on their back, because I think when we were having this conversation before, you said we would actually bring the money at the county.
If we were gonna give money to support this, that's what I'd recommend, is that we give it to the county. Or something that the county's gonna buy and the county's gonna own and county's gonna be responsible for.
Yeah.
That's kind of where. So, maybe another time, but. Um, the other piece is the um, as Mike knows, the. Framework for the bear of the bear and the Voyager, if you haven't noticed, is back in place. Um, with the sign to be back up in a couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, the one on the left there? Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there one? The framework, not the sign.
Framework.
Oh, I was gonna say, I just walked by it and it's like, ah, it's gone, so now it's back. It's actually been gone for like.
No, I know, but I see the big cedar trees there too, so you're gonna have to maybe look at some pruning there before you.
I think they've done quite a bit of pruning.
Okay.
But to me, it's just enough to put the sign even.
Right.
There's still some visibility work that we need to think about and then maybe just a little more clearance than we're. So to me, it's not.
Are these our trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be on tomorrow's agenda.
Is, we just redid those signs. And the bear tree side got ruined because the cedar is gonna ruin the paint, it's gonna ruin it every single time. So if cedar doesn't get out of the way, we're gonna be spending money again on this. And unfortunately, all those trees were just left and no one paid attention and now they've grown big. And the whole visibility of that side is gone. And I know that'll be temperamental, but it needs some serious looking at and maybe it needs some replanning of some items.
Yeah.
But it's been money to put that up and leave that cedar up.
Perfect, perfect job for the tree board.
Well, they won't be doing it.
For the parks department or the utilities.
Yeah, but in terms of like, is it not what would go in its place?
Yes.
If we were gonna do a long term plan, but in the short term.
Yeah, okay.
Let's get the sign in place and let's make sure people can see it and let's make sure it's not gonna.
I'm gonna, I'll look at tonight, I just think, I think there's more than one tree in there.
There's a number of them.
Yeah, right.
The other side, not so much anymore.
Yeah. We have a little help on that one. That was, we went down. Oh. Oh.
Somebody let the brakes go on a car. I kind of know who did that.
I kind of know. Statute of limitations.
Yes, it was many years ago.
Which.
Except the tree. Someone's bumper.
Um, that was the other thing I noticed up on the. Top of the pillar for the Voyager, a big hunk fell and somebody placed it down on the ground right off the street. Did you guys have a chance to go, did we have a chance to look yet? So we might have to be looking at some of that stuff too.
Just pack it.
And bear tree, the bear of the bear tree park. I wonder if we don't need to look at that over time, is is the shape and the whole imaging just wearing away? Like when you take a closer photo, which I did for other reasons and realized it's really.
The airports had that conversation recently, this year. About the bear tree statue and what to do with it.
Oh, oh, how can it be refurbished or if they want to?
Or if you want to.
Yeah. Is it cement? Is it got some kind of coating on it?
I don't think so.
Doesn't look like it.
If it did, it's gone now.
I don't know, I mean, did it?
I guess lovely orange lichen growing up.
That part doesn't bug me, but I can tell the details are fading and it's like a zero, I don't know what that involves, is there a way to kind of restore some of that? Not eventually just. But. Some that, or I don't know if that's the C E C, no.
Wouldn't be a terrible thing to ask them to think about.
Ah, maybe, he asks them. Um, tomorrow, our H R committee is meeting. Um, and I'm going to ask, which I haven't, but I'll say it right now. That we're going to ask Robina to come next meeting to give a report of all what she's been busy doing and what's, what our needs are, what. Where we're at, so she'll do that on the twenty fifth of September, that's all I have. Here I'll say, thank you for us.
Thanks, goodness.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.